Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, July 9th, 2024 at 2:00 PM. We're in the Ocean Shores Library on Point Brown Avenue in Ocean Shores, Washington. Like to call the meeting order now. Uh, roll call. Commissioner Ward here. Commissioner Barr. We can see you. Commissioner Bees. And Tom Harris.
You don't have us on mute still, do you?
No.
Because Carrie didn't make any motion either. She heard us either.
Commissioner Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Hey, June, do you want to sit with me for a minute?
Sure.
The next thing is to approve the meeting agenda. I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Motion.
Warren, will you stack it up?
Yeah.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of the minutes now. Uh, they didn't make it into the agenda, but I sent them out to everyone. So can we get a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on June 25th, 2024?
Hold on, through. Motion, uh, motion.
Start that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any public comments in the room? Yes, Chris.
As far as what we're here for, any reason?
Uh, we'll do the, it's about the public hearing, we'll do that in a moment.
Okay, perfect, okay.
But good question. Any public comments from afar? Yes, Vida.
Okay, I got my audio on, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you now, yes.
Thank you. So today is July, what is it, July 9th? I just wanted to remind the regulated community, and that includes individuals, city staff, all developers.
Excuse me, Vida, could you start over, please? We lost you.
Okay.
Thank you.
How about now, can you hear me now?
Can hear you now, thank you.
Okay. So I, my comment during this open session is to remind city staff, all the, the regulated community. Uh, somebody must have their microphone on, so in the audience, any Zoom participants, can you please shut off your microphone? Because you're interfering with the audio. So I'm, I would like to remind the regulated community, which includes all the city staff, the developers and contractors, as well as the real estate agents in town, that the new 2024 Stormwater Manual is available, and it becomes effective August 1st, 2024. That includes new rules for new development and redevelopment. The thresholds have been changed.
Because you've had the things.
Uh, Mr. Byes, city@yahoo.com, could you please turn off your microphone? So anyway, I'm just reminding everybody that the new Stormwater Manual is out, and that any new development or redevelopment within the shoreline district is mandated to follow the most recent version, which as of August 1st will be the 2024 version. Until then, the 2019 version is in effect. I advise everybody to take a look at the 24 manual, because there are significant changes to it. Thank you. Mark, this is Susan, I have no comment at the moment, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me, Mark?
You can hear you, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Oh.
Without any further public comments, I would like to adjourn the planning commission meeting effective 2:05 PM for a public hearing. Marshall, I will pass the time to you.
What?
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, as Mark said, we're opening two public hearings this afternoon in front of the planning commission. Both of these public hearings are for a rezon request of real property in Ocean Shores. Uh, the, the role of the planning commission will be to provide an advisory recommendation to the city council, at which time the city council will have the final role of making the determination whether the rezon is to be put over or not. There will be two opportunities within each rezon for the public to have comment. Uh, the first rezon that I'm going to go through is rezon 24-00003. And, uh, and this is for the rezon of a mixed zone parcel that is currently zoned half B1 and half B2. Uh, the difference, in a nutshell, between a B1 and a B2 parcel would be a B2 parcel is allowing, uh, more, more outside uses or uses that the code refers to as an unattractive nature. And, um, so this parcel is comprised of two of those. The B1 retail commercial would not allow for these outdoor, more unattractive uses, like the B2. The, um, the application for the change in this zoning of a B1 retail commercial to a B2 general commercial over both lots would be to permit outdoor storage, which would not be allowed under B1. The applicant is June Bonjono, and... How do you pronounce your mom's first name?
Cosico.
Cosico Pratt, um, from Ocean Shores, Washington. Um, the parcel number for this first application is 0929-00004800. That's Division 15, lots 48 and 49, as combined with the county, located at 949 Trentport Southeast. The lot size as combined is 16,179 square feet. The existing conditions, it's a mixed parcel, lot 48, B1, and lot 49 is B2. Both halves are general commercial under land use designation, and there is no shoreline jurisdiction applying to these lots. The surrounding conditions, as far as zoning goes, um, to the north, there's a B1 retail commercial lot. To the south, there's a B1 retail commercial lot. To the east, also a B1 retail commercial lot. And to the west, there's a B2 retail, uh, it would actually be general commercial. To the north, uh, the land use designations from the Ocean Shores Comprehensive Plan is a general commercial. To the south, a service professional and office. To the east, general commercial. And to the west, general commercial. Existing land uses around this proposal. To the north is vacant undeveloped land. To the south is a transient rental or residential use. Each, uh, east is a commercial warehouse shop. To the west is an auto repair facility. Uh, the background on this, uh, property, addressed at 949 Trentport Southeast, it's located in the southeast quadrant of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is Point Brown Avenue, and it's approximately 80 feet northeast. The property is a mixed zone, B1 and B2, and it's surrounded by a mix of B1 and B2 zone parcels. And parcels in the immediate vicinity are a mixture of B1 and B2 zoning. The public hearing notices for the rezon application, uh, rezon 24, five zeros and a three, scheduled for Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, were sent out. Um, for those of you who are not aware, we had a SNAPU in our original schedule and had to reschedule this public hearing from the last planning commission meeting to today. And so as soon as we, um, realized the error, we sent out public notices right away for this meeting today. Staff analysis, the staff has determined that this proposed development project would not be permitted, uh, in a B1 retail commercial zone. Uh, meaning that, um, if the owner of this parcel wanted to do outdoor storage, half of this lot would be prohibited from doing that. The other half would be, um, allowed. Uh, so in, in the B2, uh, would be required for both halves of the parcel to make full use, wherein outdoor storage would be a permitted use as defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code, 1736020A. And, uh, Ocean Shores Municipal Code 173610 defines the purpose of this district as intended for a wide variety of commercial uses, including those requiring outdoor activity. Uses of less attractive nature are intended to be located in this district. The standard of review. The code, uh, being reviewed against this proposal is 1736B2zone. It's a general commercial zone. Uh, 173610, the purpose, this district is intended for a wide variety of commercial uses, including those requiring outdoor activity, adult entertainment and storage. Uses of a less attractive nature and requiring less visibility are intended for this district. However, no use causing any pollution, nuisance, hazard, blight, uh, odor or congestion would be permitted. Permitted uses in 1736020, one-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings, grocery, drug, cop, uh, drugstores, hardware stores, hotels, motels, restaurants, cafes, taverns, uh, cocktail lounges, banks, professional offices, and a list of, uh, similar type uses. So to summarize the end of that, these are facilities, um, which comply, would comply with state site criteria adopted, um, in accordance with RCW 70105210 or its successor. The proposed use appears to be consistent with the purpose of this district. A proposed site plan shall conform to all city standards. Approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. There's knowing indication that allowing, uh, this storage yard in this zone would create any nuisance to life limb or property. The project is currently located in a B1 and B2 zip district, where one zoned to B2 exclusively would be designated as a permitted use and would be legal under all applicable city development regulations and feasible based on conditions of the parts. Uh, recommendations, should the planning commission recommend to the council and the council grant approval of the proposed rezon, changing the mixed zone parcel from a combination of B1 and B2 to exclusively a B2's general commercial zone, the following will be required. All future building plans and site design must meet the following. Current International Fire Code, current international building and residential code, Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title 15, Buildings in Construction, uh, the City of Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title 17, Zoning, the City of Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title 13, Water and Sewers. And that will conclude the staff report for this. Um, at this point, I'd like to open up the hearing for public comment. If anybody has public comment regarding the rezon of this parcel, uh, now would be the time. Anybody in the room?
Yeah. Comment?
We have nobody in the room. Uh, we'll open it up online, and I see Vida has her raised hand for a public comment.
Okay, thank you, Marshall. First, I want to say, these proceedings were noticed as a public hearing, but I do not see the hearing examiner present today to take testimony, develop the record, or set hearing ground rules. RCW 35A 63.170 outlines the hearing examiner system relating to proposals to amend the site-specific zoning of a particular parcel. The city in 1990 adopted the hearings examiner system for land use actions under Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Chapter 1761. The planning commission has no authority to adjudicate, uh, these rezoning matters. I'd like to, uh, quote to you from the municipal code, Chapter 1761.100, Duties of the Hearings Examiner, which says, and I quote, "In regard to applications for rezon, preliminary plat approval and public, um, PUDs, the examiner's findings and conclusions shall be submitted to the city council, which shall have the final authority to act on such applications." So that being said, let me go to the matter at hand, which is rezon 24-003. Uh, and that's the Pratt RV Storage located at 949 Trentport Southeast, lots 48 and 49 in Division 15. Um, this proponent came before the hearings examiner in July of 2022. Hold on one second. Under COP conditional use permit 21-005, which I am incorporating into the record by reference. At that time, the proponent presented an application for three enclosed storage buildings comprised of approximately 40 enclosed self-storage units, the buildings of which straddled the property line of lots 48 and 49. The hearings examiner, excuse me, the hearings examiner in that matter, in the 22 matter, 2022 matter, imposed various conditions for lots 48 and 49, including the following, and I quote from the hearings examiner's decision on pages eight and nine. Quote, "The applicant is required to combine the lots through a boundary line adjustment, uh, revision, excuse me, prior to building permit issuance, and the city planner, Marshall Reed, testified at the hearing that a rezon of the combined parcels would not be required under the municipal code, but that development of the property would be reviewed for compliance with the more restrictive requirements of the B1 zoning designation. This more restrictive zoning is allowed under Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Chapter 1751O3O." So I ask, why now is a rezon required for open RV storage where the more restrictive B1 zoning requirements would be applied? Point number two. What is the underlying permitted use for this combined parcel that requires a change in zoning from B1 to B2? Let me give you an analogous example of conditions of open RV storage at a location not too far from the subject parcel. This other RV storage location is at 955 Kidder Court Southeast, which actually has its own section in the municipal code that addresses RV storage at this light lot. And I asked that the commission or the hearings examiner, uh, review this section of the code and apply the same exact conditions, either the more restrictive B1 zoning, as Mr. Reed testified during the previous hearing in 2022, or, and I'll quote, and I'm going to read to you from the code, um, and that's Chapter 1736O70. Uses located in Lot 61, Division 15. So this is one block away from the subject parcel. And I'm going to read you right out of the code. The zoning classification of Lot 61, Division 15, blah, 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 plot of Ocean Shores, is changed from B1 to B2, subject to compliance by the owner with the following conditions. A, site screening landscaping must be planted and maintained along the boundary of Lot 61, Division 15. And in this case, it was Silver King Avenue. We're talking about Kidder Court right now, which abuts, uh, Storm King. B, cyclone fencing must be installed along Silver King Avenue. C, no permanent structure not normally permitted in the B1 zone shall be allowed on Lot 61, Division 15. D, and here's the critical point that I want to impress upon everybody that's listening. If the use of this parcel is changed from RV storage, the zone will revert back to its original classification of B1, which I think is a reasonable solution for the matter at hand. So I asked Marshall, or whoever is adjudicating this matter, to impose the same restrictions that were imposed on Mr. Ross, who owns, uh, 955 Kidder Court, and also has an outdoor RV storage facility on that parcel and several other budding parcels in the area. So those are my questions. What's the underlying, I'll just reiterate, what's the underlying permitted use? And then why is now a rezon required when Mr. Reed formally said that he would apply the standards of the B1 zoning to that dual, uh, zone? Now combined parcel, I would thank you for combining the lots. Those, that's the end of my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vida. Is there anybody else online that would like to comment? Nobody else, Daryl or Susan, I have you online, or, uh, Jane? Would either of you like to comment this afternoon?
Marshall, this is Susan, no, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hey, Marshall, this is Jane, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Daryl, no, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so that will conclude, uh, the hearing for rezon 24-00003 um, for Bonjono and Pratt. So that hearing behind us, and the next hearing, uh, that we'll be hearing, um, is for rezon 24.
Marshall, if we can wait for a minute, so.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Ward can step outside?
Okay. Nope, we, there were no questions for the applicant, so you're home free. Uh, no, I'll, I'll respond to this in writing. Yeah. I wouldn't have had.
Did you want the commissioners to respond to that before we move on, or?
Um, no, I'd like to respond in writing, um, because, uh, the, the nature of some of these things, I wanted to look at some of the, uh, uh, some of the references that.
But reciting, sorry.
I'll respond in writing, and then I will CC the planning commission. Perfect. Okay, so the next rezon, uh, like I said, is 24-00002. And this is an application for a residential R1 lot to be rezoned to a B1 retail commercial lot for the purpose of transient rental. The applicant is Judith A. Grig, located at 134 Marine View Drive Southwest in Ocean Shores, Washington. Uh, the project description, uh, we have Judith A. Grig, parcel number 0931-011-09900. Uh, division block and lot, this is in divisions 16, lot, uh, block 11, lot 99. That's 134 Marine View Drive Avenue, uh, Southwest. It's a 9,054 square foot lot, zone, uh, R1, land use, single family. Uh, it is in the shoreline jurisdiction. The zoning, uh, surrounding conditions, uh, to the north, there's a single-family R1. To the south, Oi Hat Bay Plan Unit Development, Zone B1. To the east, Public Recreational of Lake Menard. And to the west, across the street, is Oi Hat Bay B1. Land use designation from the planning, or from the, uh, Comprehensive Plan, to the north, the single-family, to the south, neighborhood commercial, to the east, Public Recreational, Lake Menard, and to the west, neighborhood commercial. The existing land uses around this parcel. Uh, to the north is a single-family residence, vacant undeveloped lot. To the south, there's a transient rental. To the east, there's Public Recreational, Lake Menard, and to the west, uh, transient rental. That would be the Oi Hat Bay Plan Unit Development. Background, the subject property addressed at 134 Marine View Drive Southeast is located at the, uh, southwest quadrant of the City of Ocean Shores. The closest intersecting road is Tonkwood Avenue, uh, roughly 321 feet south. The property is located in an R1 single-family zoning area. The zoning of the lot to the south is B1, located in the Oi Hat Bay Plan Unit Development, impacting the lot for a single-family dwelling to the north, would be a permitted use in this district. Uh, notices, again, this hearing was to be conducted at the last, um, planning commission hearing, and, uh, due to, uh, an electronic malfunction, we had a, a problem with notices, and so we canceled the hearing and rescheduled for today and re-noticed the hearing. Staff analysis, the rezon of this parcel from R1 to B1 is necessary in order to prevent, uh, excuse me. Let me start over. The rezon of this parcel from R1 to B1 is necessary in order to permit and license the use of a transient rental. If rezoned, the property located at 134 Marine View Drive will require a shoreline substantial development permit under SMP, Chapter 7-04-01, to operate as a commercial transient rental business. The standard of review, the project proposal for rezoning was reviewed for Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1716020, permitted uses of the R1, and Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1734020, B1 zone retail commercial. The B1 zone is intended for retail commercial uses and providing day-to-day goods and services. Financial, professional, and personal and commercial services are intended for this district, as well as mercantile, lodging, food, and other common goods and services. All uses, uses and structures are to be of good appearance, well-designed, and free of hazard, nuisances, or other unattractive attributes. The R-zone, uh, the R-zone specifically prohibits permitting and licensing of the transient rental. Uh, the code analysis, the proposed project would be prohibited in the R1 zone, Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1716020. Uh, permitted uses, uh, shall be as follows. Single-family residences, and the district is intended for low-density detached single-family dwellings in order to assure maximum of light, air, open space, privacy, and the protection of property values. Other uses should only be allowed if they are compatible with these values and consistent with the overall public interest. Where the proposed use would be inconsistent with the purpose of the district, a rezon to B1 retail commercial is required at a minimum to allow for the use of a transient rental. The proposed site plan shall conform to all city standards. Approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. Um, the summary of criteria for transient rentals. The code 1750O55, the purpose, A, the purpose of the ordinance codified in this section by petition or initiative is to protect this, the character of the city's residential neighborhoods by prohibiting transient rental of dwellings and recreational vehicles therein. Use of dwellings for transient rental purposes um, are identified as an unmitigated adverse impact on surrounding residential uses and properties, and is therefore prohibited, except as provided for as in these zoning regulations. It is found and determined that transient rental use of dwellings has been permitted in the past, and that the lawful use of property pursuant to the former Ocean Shores Municipal Code Sections 1750O55 and 1716050, and the Ocean Shores Ordinance 419 of 1986, and 518 of 1998, 91, may continue for a specified period, subject to certain conditions contained in this section. These conditions include an amortization period of five years and the provision for individualized determinations that lawful investments specifically commit. and the provision for individualized determinations that lawful investments specifically committed to transient rental occupancy have been made and may warrant a longer amortization period. Uh, prohibition of transient rentals with exceptions. No owner, person, or entity shall occupy, use, operate, rent, lease, nor offer, nor negotiate to use, lease, or rent a dwelling in the R one, R two, R three, R four, R five, R six A, R six B, R six C, R seven, R eight, or R nine zones for a transient rental, except a dwelling holding a lawful conditional use permit for transient rental on the effective date of the ordinance codified in this section and which complies with the requirements of subsection C. The Grig property is located in an R one zone where a transient rental or nightly rental would be prohibited. The R one single-family residence is designated as a permitted use and would be legal under all applicable city development regulations and feasible based on the conditions of the parcel. In order to operate a business as a transient rental, the parcel must be rezoned to a minimum B one retail commercial wherein a transient rental would be a permitted use. Should the planning commission approve this rezone, the planning department recommends, uh, conditions as listed in addition to any conditions imposed by the planning commission or the city council. Um, the Grig property constructed for the sole purpose of a single-family residence will need to adhere to land use, environmental, building, and fire code requirements. In addition, a shoreline substantial development permit, um, application, uh, applicable, um, based on table five dot one, uses of the Ocean Shores Shoreline Master Program would be required. An Ocean Shores Business License would be required, uh, to be established in a B one retail commercial before advertising or conducting business as a transient rental. And that concludes the staff report for this rezone. At this point, I'd like to open it up in the room for any public comments. Anybody in the room have public comments regarding this proposal? Okay.
My name is Kimberly Colgrove. I'm a broker at John Scott Ocean Shores. My Judith Brigg is my client. And it's it's interesting that you stated that the privacy in the R one is is concluded as something that an R one should have is privacy. As since Oi Hat Bay has built next to her, she doesn't have that privacy anymore. It has adverse impact on her. She bought the property before Oi Hat Bay had her had built any of their houses next to her. When she bought the property, even in the listing, it stated a very private property with no one building on the next to it, a private lot everywhere. She had no idea that they were going to build nightly rentals next to her. Knowing that somebody might build there, that's that was nothing that worried or concerned her because you have a consistent of a neighbor that is next to you and you know your neighbor and the neighbor is consistent. However, the ins and outs of nightly rentals is why people do not want to live next to nightly rentals. We have her put the house on the market and it's been on the market for ninety-nine days because everybody that says it says it's a lovely home, but we're right next to nightly rentals. So without having that nightly rental approved, she is unable to sell her home and be able to move to a place where she can get that privacy that she so desires. And buying residential home is something that she wants to have around her as residential properties. She's now literally one, um, in this particular property. It's on the canal, Lake Menar, and she goes out on the deck and enjoys the privacy of her deck. However, the houses next door overlook her privacy of her deck and in and outs of the nightly rentals come in and are loud and, you know, just as nightly rentals would be. And it disturbs the privacy that she has. Thank you for listening to me and and considering.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Kim. Well, all the public comments that we've heard today will be entered into the record. And we'll go back and listen to the recording as well to make sure that we get details out of that. Um, do we have anybody online, uh, that would like to make a public comment? Vita, would you like to comment?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
We.
Because I I really can't hear you.
I have to mute it in between so that you don't hear yourself.
Okay. So I'll just continue on, but first I want to reiterate what I said before about the hearings examiner and the planning commission and what your roles are. I think you've confused your authority. Uh, secondly, I want to say that I think it was improper for Ms. Colgrove to speak. I think she violated the appearance of fairness doctrine, even though she's not a commissioner. Um, for those individuals who are party to today's action and for those commissioners who may not be familiar with the appearance of fairness doctrine, you should ask yourself the following questions. Do you have any interest in the property or the application, or do you own property within a certain distance of the property subject to the application? Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of the hearing? Can you hear and consider the application in a fair and objective manner? Have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the application? And if so, you need to place into the record the substance of any such communication so that interested parties have the opportunity at the hearing to rebut the communication. And also, as I said, I'm challenging Ms. Colgrove's participation uh, in this matter. Now let me get to the specifics of the subject. This property was built in nineteen ninety-six. Does it have fire sprinklers as required for short-term rentals under the International Building Code? Will the applicant retrofit the property with automatic fire sprinklers as required? And if not, why not? Also, will the subject provide the necessary additional parking spaces for short-term rentals? And that concludes my comment.
Thank you, Vita. Are there any other comments, uh, online?
I agree. I agree with Vita.
This is Tom.
Okay, go ahead. Susan.
Thank you, Marshall. Just a quick question. I was looking through the supporting documents and noticed that all of the documents were referring to the hearing that should have taken place June twenty-fifth. And I'm asking the question as to whether or not there should not have been new supporting documents attached to the packet that would have indicated that you did, as you said, you did the notice. But the documents that are attached here do not show that. I don't know if that's, um, an error or housekeeping that we would just have to assume listening to the hearing that it had changed. Uh, always things like that 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 trouble me. Um, I would like to echo what Vita brought forward, and I find it rather odd that you would have a realtor who is selling the property actually be speaking at a public hearing because it would seem that she would stand to gain from this. And the same questions that Vita brought up about making, um, the unit be up to code if it was a transient rental. And my last part of my comment would be, and if this takes place, what's to stop everyone else that's next to a transient rental if they're not now able to do it? Coming in and saying, well, we'd like to do it too because we can't sell our property or we don't have the privacy we had before. And privacy is something that we all we care about a great deal. And unfortunately, when somebody builds next to us with our rules with a five-five-foot setback on either side, you lose your privacy when somebody comes in to build, whether it's a transient rental or not. So that argument doesn't doesn't sway me. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, Marshall.
Thank you, Susan.
Marshall, I have one sent to me of the email that I'll know you to provide unless you have.
Okay, yeah, would is this the one from Jerry?
It is.
McKay? Yes. Would you like to read that into the record? So go to the room.
So received an email, uh, from a citizen, um, who said, I've received the letter, but unfortunately, I'm not able to attend the Zoom meeting today. I'm hoping the petition to change from R one to B one is denied for the property on Marine View Drive. I support Oi Hat Resort. Thank you. Jerry McKay.
Okay, thank you. And we have one more comment in the room. Uh, Dan, would you comment?
Yeah, I kind of heard what Susan said. You got, I guess, I I heard you say that there on one side is another R.
That's correct.
Yeah. So what stops that R one from then applying to the diagram? And then what stops the next one to apply? So how do you how do you manage this? I just don't see how you could do. You do it for one, you got it.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Marshall, even though they're not recognized, and I'm sitting with the family, so that's who I'm speaking for, not speaking for me. I'm speaking for them because they're not very good at public speaking. They asked me to do this for them.
Doesn't matter.
Kit, can I make a comment, please?
Okay, order order in the room. I'm going to recognize one person at a time, and at this point, I would like to, um, recognize Kim to, um, provide some explanation as to her participation in the hearing.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kim.
Um, I'm coming as a friend more than a realtor on this. They had asked me to speak for them because they're not very good at public speaking. She has trouble hearing, but they are here present to ask and talk. Um, the the lot at the north was their property, that they bought that for the privacy. However, the people that lives on the other side of them asked to purchase that for and to keep the privacy as well between the two lots. When she sold the house, they didn't want to have somebody else moving into that her property and then sell that lot to somebody else. So they actually kept that her privacy in between the two properties. So that's that's so that was their property, but they actually were going to want to sell the house. And they had an agreement that these people would not develop the property or do anything to the property for a couple of years until they got their house sold. So, um, and they knew this was something that they were trying to do and to try to to get the nightly rental in the property.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Um, did we have another comment online from somebody? Oh, Jay, Jay, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Marshall. I'm sorry about cutting in. I can't couldn't find my hand raise feature, so. Um, no, I wanted to back up as far as the codes, as far as what Vita every said and everything about the code issues with the property. And even with the explanation, it concerns me, uh, that you said that, uh, Kim said she was there more as a friend than a realtor, but even the statement more as still still shows that you're representing as a realtor or gives that, uh, uh, appearance anyways. So I just wanted to add that those are also two concerns of mine on the issue, and that would be all. Thank you.
Any other public comments from the room? Okay, at this time, I'd like to, um, say thank you to everybody that did offer comments and we'll close the hearing for the two rezones at this point, and I'll turn it back over to Mark.
Okay. While the hearing closes, we'll reconvene the Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting at two forty-four P M. We get to buy them on our agenda. Wildland, wildland urban interface. Uh, Commissioner Bar, would you like to, uh, step up to that? We need to get, uh. We have a guest with us today, Kurt Bagley from the Fire Department.
You don't have a state team.
Oh, okay.
You can if you want.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay. So at our last meeting, we introduced this topic of wildland urban interface uh, based on some new legislation passed by the state legislature. Commissioner Bar would like to put on it.
Oh, correct. So I'll just kind of pick up. I guess basically just giving an overview before we left off, which is actually known as the WUI. It's WAC fifty-one dash fifty-five. And in that, it focuses a lot on building and construction in what is referred to as wildland inter urban interfaces, excuse me. Um, and these are areas where you have, in essence, business or residential properties that are budding or budding up to wildland. So for Ocean Shores, the state has determined so far that those are the properties along all along Sand Dune, which, uh, are it's a very long stretch, and it's all on the dune area. So they have all up to wildland back there. They also designate almost every downtown area as a wildland urban interface area. And I believe there's another area just south, I think, of, uh, Weatherwax that they've determined. Um, so what it means in these areas is somebody has to make the designation of how fire likely are these areas, and that has to be our fire official. And there's a formulation that they can go through based on topography, whether it's flat or steep, uh, terrain, whether what type of vegetation is growing on it, whether it's, you know, low like likelihood of flame, knowing that everything will flame in enough heat. But there are some vegetation like willows, for example, that are far less likely to flame than, say, a myrtle. Myrtle's far more resonous and more likely to flame. So that has to be looked at to determine what is the likelihood of fire in these areas? What's that determinist made? And it's a rating scale and a whole formulation to go through on are we not likely, somewhat likely, or extremely likely to have a catastrophic issue back there or any of the designated areas? And depending on where we come out on that scale determines very much on how we could build, how we can plan, um, and how far basically a fire break has to be from the furthest structure out. Um, this legislation went into effect on, uh, March fourteenth or fifteenth, I believe. And and it is an update. Fifty-one fifty-five has been in existence for a long time, but they've just enhanced and enhanced and enhanced as we've seen other wildfires happen throughout the country. Um, I think Washington is trying to ensure that we'll do everything they can to ensure that we won't have a situation like Alahina or some of the areas in California where they've just been flattened. Um, I know right now in Leavenworth, they've got areas designated as extremely high, no surprise there. And in extremely high areas, the Washington State minimum is a hundred feet. So they've extended that to a hundred and fifty feet that they've got to have vegetation there regardless. So that's something that they decided as a municipality.
So Kurt, last last meeting, you were kind enough to take some homework, um, for us. That I bet you have. So, uh, what did you discover, uh, as you looked into this newly passed?
Well, firstly, I went to the Washington State map. And I have to say, I'm not impressed by it. A lot of areas not covered. I think pretty much all Ocean Shores, that wildland are near great street. However, the building code only addresses commercial profits buildings. Doesn't address residential. I think that's why they bought a large portion of the map.
Is that something? Is that something that we need to address?
I would suggest that, uh, we designate our own areas through their process. Because I think they did apply over on Google Maps, it's like, okay, this place looks threatening. They didn't come out and actually give them groundwork. Uh, other things I noticed, uh, even though she said a hundred fifty feet out. The responsibility of the property owner's job to have property line, that's stated in my code. Which I found interesting, but. Because that code was written for large work. Personal properties. That's why they want to go up to a hundred, hundred fifty feet. But it does say that, uh, property owners' responsibility to stop the property line. Some of the things I thought I knew yesterday. I changed right before I came here, because without reading, without doing stuff, I'm going to come, you updated stuff.
Okay.
One thirty? I said, like, oh, that changes half the stuff I wrote down. Um, I'm.
So more.
Hopefully, you're tired to attempt to answer any questions that might happen. Then to actually be reading.
Well, the big question I have is. If we need to do our own evaluation. How do we go about doing it?
Okay, that's built out in the code itself, they have a table and worksheet to work through that.
Okay.
I didn't look into it, I just know that it's a process in there. And that would be my one recommendation, do our own.
Own assessment. Any other questions from inside? Any? Questions by the commissioners on this one? Tom, do you have any questions on? The wildlife, wildland urban interface?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from afar?
Mark, this is Susan. It was very difficult to hear Kurt. Is it possible for you to just summarize what he shared with you?
That we should, uh, designate our own areas for review. That the state map doesn't really cover ocean shores as he believes it should. And that the property owner's responsibility ends at the property line.
Thank you, Mark.
Welcome. So, should we? How do we go forward with this process?
I would have to look at the process that's outlined.
Okay, so, uh, could we invite you back?
Again, yes.
Okay.
Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention. Uh, just faded away.
I mean, I, I firmly believe, and I'm sure Commissioner Barr has the same thought, this isn't something that's gonna be done overnight. It's not gonna be done in a short period of time. But it's, I believe, a process that we need to begin.
Agreed.
I, I, I do have a question. So if we go through this process, is this something that we, is the state mandating that we do have our own plan, or is this?
The state mandates that we adopt this code.
Hmm.
Now whether we accept their map or do our own is up to us.
Okay, but as once we do our own map, that's our map, we don't have to submit it to the state.
We do have to submit.
You do, okay, 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 so. Okay, so it has to go on record with the state, then we have to live by it.
And, and I believe anything that the state has shown is the minimum, right?
Yeah.
You can always go more, to go less might be a battle with the state, but to go more, I don't think they're gonna have.
I understand.
Correct, exactly. That is the minimum. Correct, in every, in every respect, it's the minimum.
And, and this is, uh, legislation that was passed by the Washington Legislator, so it's gotta be looked at, I believe.
Yeah.
It's, and it's in our best interest to do so, I think. Yes, though.
How would this affect what we build? It would. Create a more power resistant structure, uh, given the size and types and room types. That. In the decks and. Does he have any choose to build? Does it fix setbacks?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, too.
I don't think.
No. Even though my neighbor may have, Black's where it's on his property, I don't have to worry. Well, not worry about it, but there's nothing you can do about it.
Unless the fire breaks out, and they've not done anything to address it.
I, I thought it was said that if it's, if your home backs up to one of these areas that you have to, your structure has to be a hundred and fifty feet from, from that. Oh, I thought, what was a hundred and fifty feet, though?
That's what, go ahead, Kim.
That's what Leavenworth is talking about, is there, uh, right, it's a hundred and fifty.
Talking about is, uh, fuel mitigation.
Correct.
And it varies depending on the fuel type. From thirty feet out to a hundred feet. And, um, like I said. Your responsibility to property owner stop at property line. We have no recourse for what's already there, kind of the property. Um, grandfather clause that people use determine, covers pretty much everything already there, unless. The fire department or a building official teams it in extreme risk, then we can address that. And that would be case by circumstances.
Well, we would like to have you back next time if.
When is next time?
That will be July twenty-third. Tuesday, uh, at 2:00 PM, if you're free. And anything we can do to help you, help the community, uh, we'd appreciate it.
I know, I'm on vacation, I think I'll make a statement here.
Oh, well, I mean, there's.
I'm gonna tell him we're not house, it doesn't happen to him.
We will.
Give me an excuse, not work.
It would be interesting to hear from Roy on it, too, because it's the fire code and the building code are really entangled on this.
Absolutely.
So it would be really interesting to hear from him.
We'll invite him back, if he's in. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on this topic, either in-house or afar? Okay, well, thanks. I appreciate you hanging around, and we look forward to. Hearing what you find, uh, as we move forward. Okay, the next item on our. The next item is transient rentals, uh. Page fifty-four to fifty-six on the agenda. Uh, the reason that I wanted to put this back on the, on the agenda. Is that Commissioner Ward had sent, uh. Recurrent legal status of use of short-term rentals being of residential use. And the article cites, uh, Washington State Supreme Court decision from. Believe it was two thousand and fourteen. And so when I have a discussion. Does that, or how does that impact us here in Ocean Shores? I was not familiar with this, uh, Wilkinson versus Chihuahua Communities Association. And how that might, uh, impact us. But I felt it was important enough, since it was a Supreme Court decision, to at least have a discussion. Uh, here in this forum. So. Thorn, do you have any comments, thoughts on, on this issue and how that might impact us? Uh, in this area?
Basically, what this decision said, this was in a private committee. The decision said that, uh. The court does not consider. Short-term rentals, anything other than a residential use of property. Now, that's not to say that communities can't ban short-term rentals, the court affirmed that they could. But as far as a particular land use, with respect to the covenants that they had at Chihuahua Communities. Uh, the people renting their home off from time to time would not violate those covenants. The reason it's important here is because we don't really have a standard for short-term rentals. At all, except that we, except that our city considers them a commercial use. Well, the court says no. So, what do we do? We, most, most cities have a conditional use regime. Or some sort of allows for particular areas or there, residential areas. Uh, variances, who knows what they do, we don't have anything like that. Since we don't have anything like that, and we call it considered as commercial uses. That brings into play all sorts of other. Construction, perhaps anyway, construction, uh. Uh, techniques and on which is, is perhaps is a difference, so. We don't really have anything consistent, we should do that at least.
Marshall, do you have any thoughts on this?
Um, I do, I've, uh, Thorn sent me this, um, Supreme Court decision quite a while back, and I looked at it, um. You know, in, you know, trying to see if there was, uh, if there was something that was. You know, in this court decision that, you know, would have bearing on the way our code's written or whatever. Um, the thing that I take away from the court decision. Um, the, the court made a statement about a residential use or a transient rental being a residential use. The building code's pretty specific that it's an R3, um, but because it's being used for, um. Overnight or a lodging type facility. The court case in this thing. Invalidated the amendment to the covenants of this homeowner's association. Uh, in order to protect the reasonable and settled expectation of landlords when they bought their property. So they changed the rules after people had purchased their property and were prohibiting, uh, transient rental use. And, um. The way I see it, our Ocean Shores municipal code has already taken that provision to protect the reasonable settled expectations. Um, in seventeen fifty oh fifty-five, uh, transient rentals. Specifically, at this time, they prohibited, uh, transient rental use in all of the R zones. The accommodation that they gave at the time, um, was for those people that already had, um. They already had conditional use permits to operate transient rentals within that zone. They gave a provision for those people to extend those permits, uh, to be able to fully amortize their, um, mortgages or loans. That were dependent on that income to make payments on the property. And so I'm not sure that this case, um. Is a full apples-to-apples comparison on what the Ocean Shores Municipal Code has going on. Because the code did in Ocean Shores make that reasonable, uh, or they made that, uh. Concession for the reasonable settled expectations for those people that had purchased property back in the day. Um, intending that a transient rental use would be able to pay for that property or the development of that property. Um. And then there is the conflict between, uh, the building code, which. They, they don't say that it's, uh, a use. In, there's two different types of uses in the building code. What you're physically doing with it, which is what I believe this court case said. There is really no difference between what a transient rental does within the structure, a, a transient rental occupant. Or a, a family occupant of a, of a non-transient rental. They're both eating, sleeping, uh, maybe recreating. Uh, you know, they have all of the provisions for a standard dwelling. Um, so the, the difference comes when you offer that for, um, short-term. Like a motel, hotel, or whatever, that's where Thorn's talking about, the city has applied this hotel motel concept. To, uh, the application of code when it comes to transient rentals in Ocean Shores. It, it probably deserves a little further look. But if you guys, when you look at the, this Supreme Court decision, um. Look at it from the standpoint that, that the court's decision was to strike this down. Not because, um, transient rental and full-time living is the same thing. But he was trying to protect, or the court was trying to protect the reasonable settled expectations of landlords when they first purchased those properties. Landowners today have no expectation that they would be able to rent those properties out if they're located in the R1, in the R zones, period. Uh, because code specifically prohibits that. The only people that would suffer any, um, any loss would have been those people. That purchased properties prior to the adoption of this code prohibiting. And those people were given a, a, um, a method to get conditional use permit and continue to operate their transient rentals. Through an amortization period. So that's, that's my thoughts and my reading on, you know, our current existing code, um. Versus what was written in the court decision. Okay?
Eric?
The comment that I will make is, is kind of in line with what Marshall was saying, and that is, this was a case against a homeowner's association. Although homeowner's associations have rules and covenants that are in fact registered with the state, and there's a lot of things they've got to. Jump through to register with the state, it is very different from a code city which we are. So I think the court may find very differently had we not had the provisions of. Reasonable expectation for use of property that we have in our code, so to me. That's the clarifying issue, is that it's interesting, you know, that they found it to be a residential use, but. It's different, it is not apples-to-apples comparison because it's a homeowner's association, not a code city.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, I'll agree with that, and, uh, I, I was president of a homeowner's association before I moved out here. And we actually had a very, very similar case to this, in that the covenants. Restricted the use of property for commercial use, and I think there's covenants, this covenant that they were referring to in here probably said the same thing. Probably, it only stated that it, that it eliminated, that you could not use it for commercial use, and then they did an amendment to ex. Extend that to transient rentals, and I think that's where they got zapped down on it because that was after the fact. And, um. You know, we, we had a, various people were, are the covenants of this homeowner's association that I was at was written in the nineteen sixties where. You didn't have transient rentals, or Airbnbs, and we were running, before I moved, we were running into the same situation that. People were asking, well, can I use our property for transient rentals, and, okay, is it commercial or not, and. And that's, I guess, here the Supreme Court decided whether that's commercial or not, but we're different, being that our code is specifically stating. Where you can, it's not eliminating transient, transient rentals, it's specific on where it is. And I don't even think, it doesn't refers, I don't remember it referring to in the code. As commercial, that it's transient is a commercial use, it just says it has to be in a B1 and B2 zone. And you're allowed to have residential in B1 and B2 also, so.
I, I did take a dive into that, Steve, um, thanks for bringing that up, because that was something that I, I would have commented on. I actually listed out all the codes that would pertain to that, and, and for City of Ocean Shores business. Um, if, if you're providing goods, services, they went through a, a, a long list of things that would require that you have a city business license. And, um, you know, hotel, motel, anytime there's a, a transaction. Where you're providing something for a customer, whether that customer be a tenant or rental or whatever. Um, it, it kind of fell into that, and so. My, my summary of that was, or my thought was that, um. You know, a transient rental operating similar to that of a motel, having different tenants potentially every night of the week, uh, would constitute a business or a commercial use.
Actually, the court ruled the opposite.
But that's, yeah, that's what they're, they're ruling that it's.
Of course, said that, uh. Having a business license does not make it a commercial use. But I'm not trying to suggest that we're wide open for some sort of playing here, because the city, the court specifically said the cities could prohibit. Short-term rentals, correct question about, and we have. My concern was that we don't have anything that allows transient rentals except as motels, which are plainly not motels.
Uh, I define it in the code itself, uh, transient round R, R1, which is a hotel motel. As opposed to R4, which seems to be one. And R1 are controlled by the building code as opposed to the residential code.
Yeah, that was the conflict that I was referring to.
R1 is different than.
Our, our one is different than our local R one.
Correct. That, that is correct. Yeah, that's.
Well, I, I appreciate the discussion. I, I, anytime I see a Supreme Court decision, and I appreciate sharing it, um, I think it's worthwhile to have a discussion. Does it impact us? And if the answer is yes, then we need to look at it. If the answer's no, then, okay, at least we kicked it around. And uh, we talked about it. So.
The other question I had was and I don't know. Apparently, we require sprinklers in short-term rentals. I, I, I don't know, do we?
Yes.
But many short-term rentals don't have them. I was wondering, why is it?
Because we when we started enforcing that code, as our last building official didn't see it as a commercial, we saw it as a single-family bond. So you didn't enforce the sprinkler code. They had a special agreement with the city that took them out of that requirement as well.
Well, it makes sense. I mean, I, I, I feel less safe saying it all yet.
There's another thing too. Roy mentioned several other things that are required from a transient rental. Other than the sprinkler systems, transient rentals have to go by the building code. And one of the other major things is stairways. Risers, risers for stairs on commercial, which transient would be, uh, international building code can only be seven inches max, whereas residential is seven to nine inches. So most staircases in a residential home would not qualify, uh, would not be permitted in a transient rental. So basically, any two-story house here in town, like the, the people who were just here in Lottery Zone, it's a two-story house. The, you keep, the stairs probably won't, would not be permitted for a transient rental.
Well, then who rules? The state Supreme Court or the IBC? Because as the state Supreme Court says, it's not a commercial use, and the IBC says it is, which counts?
Which is.
I think uh confusion is R one as zoning area versus R one as a definition in the building code. One's looking at property use, the other one's looking at structural use.
Well, nonetheless, which, which rules?
But I think it's, I don't know where, where Roy was quoting that from, whether it's in the actual international building codes itself, that rentals under thirty days are, I think it's coming right from the international buildings. And also, there's another requirement too, that if you have, if you own more than four, I think it's if you own four, then at least one of them has to be ADA compliant too. That's why all these newer homes that were built down by Damon Point, there's like ten of them. They're all ADA. They all have handicap ramps, and they were built like last year. And they're all in the B, they're all in B two. And uh, they are transient rentals because they, and they are built to, they're all sprinkler now. I was wondering why they were all a hundred thousand dollars more than the houses I were looking at at the time, and that's why.
So Marshall, do you think we need to look at this further, given the, the R one versus R one discussion?
Um, we, we can offer clarification uh on the codes, and if it appears that there's a clear conflict between um, the, the court decision and the application of the R one building use code, which is what Roy is enforcing on the transient rentals. You know, then, then it would probably be good to have that, have that done. Um, and, and just, just so the planning commission has my feel on this, I don't, I, I don't have a positive or a negative go on this either way. I see transient rentals as a potential economic engine for a community like this, so there, that would be a benefit. You know, the, the lack of privacy, like was outlined in the hearing today, that would be a negative, so. You know, I mean, a, a community's gonna have to weigh this out for themselves and, and determine whether, you know, this is something that they want to engage in or not.
But I, I think we don't have, you know, a dog in the fight either, but I think it's in uh, it's important that we, we do clarify.
Put all the cards on the table.
In order for us to discuss it further, where, where this, where we would stand with this.
So I will, I will put it back on, on the agenda and uh, and so we can further discussion, Kurt.
I would say that there is not a conflict between the R one and the zoning and R one can the structural use. The, the zoning says this what you could use this property for. Building code, this is how you're going to build this property if you're going to use it for this use. So regardless of where the building is in the community, it's got to follow the building code.
The zoning says, well, you can have this building here, but you can't have this building. Yeah, to expand the, the use, I just don't like to be in lingo about it. We, depending on the building you expect to where you have, whatever you do.
Well, what would impact us is if we decided to ever open any R one zones, right? Our, 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 our code two transient rentals, R one building. That, that's where it impacts us, because then they would have to retrofit everything, I would think.
I would think so.
And I have some businesses.
That are doing that.
That are retrofitting their houses so they can use them as nightly rentals.
We have a, a suggestion in the R three zone that they'd be allowed as of last year. The other one you worked is uh, one former director was involved in this. I don't recall the specifics of it.
Right.
But maybe as, as a condition of yours, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Dan, didn't you, didn't you say yesterday that something was sent to council in twenty twenty-two about transit rentals?
It was actually two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, and it didn't go anywhere?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, thank you. But I, I think we should continue, continue the discussion. Uh, I just gotta feel that there's more to it out there that we can maybe solidify, so we're all on the same page.
What do other cities do?
That's, that's a, that's.
Well, here's what I can tell you about Marysville. Their building code now requires all residential buildings to have sprinklers.
Some cities do have that.
And, and the staircases and everything have to meet the same R one building use code. So they're just requiring that now. Because then that argument is over. If they ever want to open it up for anything, that argument is over because they meet the code.
It's a good point. Okay, any other questions come?
Want me to go over this or our?
Sure.
Yeah, because I, uh, I, I came, this, I, I sent uh this list to Mark and uh Marshall a couple of weeks, or, or last week, just look, the information that I think would be handy in trying to figure out um, where, you know, if, if we're to look at expanding transient rentals or not, whatever. This might be good information to have, and I'll read this out here so the the uh people know what, so we uh know what I'm asking here. Uh, I think uh this information would be helpful. Uh, first of all, I'm asking uh suggested we find out what the total number, uh, the total number of residential lots in Ocean Shores and a breakdown of those lots as to how many are built, how many are improved camping lots, and how many are unimproved lots. And in addition, uh, it would help to have this broken down per each zoning district. Uh, number two, uh, the total number of B one and B two lots with the same breakdown. Uh, number three, the same information, but uh, but by division instead of zoning districts, so basically area in the town. Number four, total number of existing transient, existing transient rentals and what zoning districts and divisions they are located at. And number five, the total number of resident and non-resident owners uh in Ocean Shores with the breakdown per zoning district and division. Uh, so basically what it's doing is trying to find out what areas are the highest concentration of owner occupied or their residential, what areas have uh, maybe larger numbers of vacant lots, because the way I see it, um, if you're gonna have a transient rental, you're better off gonna be, it better, more likely you're gonna build one than try to retrofit an existing house. Uh, so maybe there, there are large areas where there's vacant land, where there's a lot of vacant parcels, and there is going around town. So just to have this information, so uh we could be a little bit better educated.
Thorn, I think we have some of that information. Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Did it kind of last year?
Yeah, you did. It was a really good.
If you're okay with it, Marshall had offered to, for me to meet him tomorrow, because I, I don't want to spend a lot of their time in it. Um, he, he, you know, if he can point me where to provide me some of the, where to start, and I can maybe compile some of this information for our next meeting.
Some of it's on accounting and available.
Yes, I can, uh, what I'll do is I'll provide him with the Grace Harbor County database.
Sure, yeah, that'll be helpful. A lot of information.
Then it's just a matter of you playing with sorting and, and.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm assuming a lot of it, it's available. It's just a matter of sorting it in different ways and compiling.
Right, like looking at the mailing address, the same as the taxing address. If it's not, then you know that they're not residents.
Yeah, because, because you brought up a, a huge concern to me that I didn't think about la- last meeting is that a large number of our vacant B one and B two lots, which we don't have a lot of, are gonna, are being built on as transient rentals and not for the intended purpose of what they were supposed to. You said there was a lot of, you're getting a lot of people asking for vacant commercial and industrial lots, like mainly B twos.
Yeah.
And uh, and if they're, they're gonna get used up building houses on for transient rentals, we, we, and there really not a whole lot of places to add more B ones and B twos in town. Uh, and it's a concern.
So we will put that back on our agenda for next time. Um, anything else? Any other questions? The last item on the list is uh camping lots, and I only have that on there just uh to let everyone know that that will be presented tonight at council. And so there should be more information forthcoming on that very soon.
One thing on that, Mark, if you uh, if you go to the city's website and look at the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Yes.
They actually have all the results from the surveys. As a matter of fact, it wasn't, you know, it's, and it tells your name and how you voted, so there's no there's nothing hidden there. It's why, and then if you had any comments, all the comments are written too, so. All the information is on, if you look up the agenda for tonight's meeting, that's all on there, all the information.
Is it six fifty square foot on tonight?
Yeah, it's six fifty and the
And the forty percent.
And the forty percent.
There's no campings on tonight.
Um, yeah, I believe we're, we're not doing anything with that, but I am presenting on the forty percent and the six hundred and fifty square foot.
And it's, and it's interesting to read some of the, I run through some of the comments, both for and against, and I can see a lot of points on both ways. It's very interesting.
I think Sessor says there are about fifteen hundred camping lots.
But are they improved camping lots or just?
It doesn't specify, yeah.
All I know is it was around seventy percent, over seventy percent that were, were, went a hundred and twenty lots for a hundred and twenty days.
The school did a great job.
Yes.
Combined all.
It was great, because it has, it has the ones that are verified and also the ones that are not verified, so.
There's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Stuck in the mailbox.
Or they didn't, or they didn't make some of their address that I
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on any other topic? Okay, uh commissioner reports, any commissioner have a report to share?
All I have is attending city council meetings and meeting with the mayor. And uh, okay, public comment? In the house?
Yeah. I'll just give you a little history of the tiny rentals. In two thousand eighteen, we did extensive research on that. And our public, and our meetings were well attended, and they were nasty. Just pure nasty. But we did come up, we finally came up with um, you know, the street. Um, what's the street though?
Review Drive.
Three mile drive south, we say, ninety rounds.
Yeah.
So we presented to council, council this show. Two thousand and twenty-two, we redid it again, gave it back to the mayor, and never even got the kids.
Yeah.
So ninety rounds is tough, tough.
It's a very tough one.
Well, and as we've talked in this forum, it's been on the ballot twice and failed.
Right.
So.
When were those ballots, I'm interested in?
That's a good one.
Eighteen ninety-five?
Oh, so it was well, long.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two thousand fifteen, no?
Yeah. Within two different iterations, it was not the same proposal both times. They, like Dan said, they tried scaling it back, pushing it over towards the beach, pushing it down south to make it more palatable to the, to the middle of the town, and it failed miserably both times, so. Um. But the different. It, it, it was a, about measure, um, an advisory ballot measure, yeah.
Any comments from afar? Yes, Mia?
Hi there. Yeah, I have a comment about that Supreme Court uh holding. So uh municipal law and contract law are not the same, and that case addresses contract law, which is HOA law. What they found in that case may or may not apply to municipal law, which is what you guys are running under. Now, as a code city, you can write whatever you want, as long as it doesn't conflict with state law into your code. But you should not assume that what applies to contract law applies to municipal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from afar?
Mark, this is Susan. I do not. Thank you very much, and I appreciate how open you are, letting people speak. It makes a real difference, particularly when we're online. So thank you.
Appreciate feedback. Okay, our next meeting will be on the twenty-third of July at two P M here in the Ocean Shore Library. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
The motion, second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned at three twenty-seven.